The September 13, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful together in this planning board meeting, and we're grateful that we have the opportunity to serve this community and serve this county in this board. We pray that as we discuss the items on the agenda, that we might be guided and be sensitive to the needs of the community, to the needs of the regulations that we have been entrusted to enforce. Guide us that we might be kind, understanding, thoughtful, and insightful in our understanding of the issues before us. And we pray for these blessings, thy help this time, in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. But we don't have--
They're actually in the works this time. Last time, I didn't even remember they were in the works. But they're being polished up. Marjorie's here now, my rescuer, my hero, and they will be prepared and ready along with this meeting. Just about finished with July's meeting. If you recall, July's meeting was the 10 o'clock meeting, so I had to do a lot of video back and forth on that one, as Cindy knows quite well how that goes. And Judy helped me out quite a bit with the August meeting minutes. They look great. I just need to get them formatted until you-- What I will do when they're prepared is go ahead and email them out ahead of time so you can look at them, and then I'll have them printed and ready for the meeting.
That being the case, Chair moves that we table the approval of the minutes for the July and August meeting until the October meeting. Motion has been made and seconded to table the approval of the minutes for July and August until the October meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion is adopted. The following are the guidelines for presentation of the cases before us tonight. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. These are the guidelines for speakers. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, the speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson. Please remember that it is-- No, we don't have to go there. Also want to remind any applicants here tonight-- Are you an applicant, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a reminder that whatever decision the planning board reaches only serves as a recommendation to the county commissioners. The final approval of your application rests with them. We merely make a recommendation. That being said, we'll call upon staff to introduce our case tonight. Mr. Cochran, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I wish I had my voice. Sorry, I think it's back now. I apologize. Just got a little tickle in there. Good to see everyone. I hope you're all doing well. We have one rezoning request this evening, and later we have a small zoning amendment to discuss, text amendment. Mr. Craig Brodnax, who's here in attendance, is the applicant for this case, number 2021-21. It's a request for rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural conditional district, which might look a little odd because we don't do that very much. However, the parcel where he's located has a fair balance of both residential protected and residential agricultural zoning, and he and the parcel owner were quite comfortable with eliminating what might be some of the more-- I don't even want to use the controversial-- but special use permit items and things like that, narrowing it down to just the things that he knows that he would like to be able to use the property for, which I'll get to in a moment. Tax pin here, located at 500 Pine Fork Church Road, an Eden address, which is about 700 feet just south of the Eden ETJ line, and it's about 3/4 of a mile west of NC 87 as it exits Eden to the south. This parcel is served by public water, Dan River, and will be served by individual septic wastewater disposal. As mentioned, this parcel abuts others that are zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Primary zoning classes in the area are almost exclusively residential, and the vast majority, including those in the southern Eden ETJ, are also zoned residential agricultural. This is a conditional zoning request. Here's a vicinity map. As you can see, it's located just south approximately. The Eden City limits in the ETJ extends actually out further, a little bit more than that. The zoning map for the area shows that there's lots and lots of residential agricultural with a grouping of residential protected. There's a little bit of R-20 to the north, which is Eden zoning code, and a little bit of residential mixed to the east. The acreage of the parcel is about 1.6 acres, so the size is completely suitable for residential development and the associated uses that are allowed in the RA zoning class. An aerial map shows that it's a nice area with some streams nearby, not densely developed. There are several address points out there, but several of these lots are open lots at the moment. Some are developed with single-family residential, some are developed with other types of housing. The future land use map for this area, the sort of grayish, brownish area to the north is Eden's ETJ. The orangey color there is actually the reserved lands up there. It's the protected wilderness area up there. And this property here, owned by Mrs. Allen and applied for by Mr. Brodnax, is in the edge of the G1 low-density land use class. Not pictured here, looking at this map. If you would look to the southeast, about another half mile, there is a commercial-- neighborhood commercial node at the intersection of NC 87 and, I believe, Harrington Highway. I believe. Ashley Loop, NC 87 and Ashley Loop. Again, this parcel is located in the G1 low-density land class of the Rockingham County Land Use Plan, characterized by single and two-family residential development near these rural crossroad development target nodes. Policy G1-1 encourages residential development to be located in areas surrounding existing rural crossroads, as identified on the future land use map. And the Rockingham County Land Use Plan suggests that the areas in the G1 class should generally be zoned residential agricultural, and that housing variety is stressed and targeted as a major goal of the land use plan as a whole. Staff analysis, the basics for some considerations related to spot zoning and other concerns. The size of the parcel is characteristic for the area and suitable for the uses intended. As mentioned, this is supported by the land use plan. This rezoning will allow very similar uses, especially the conditional uses, that are currently present in the neighborhood and are characteristic of the area. The uses allowed in the conditional residential agricultural district are not at all disharmonious with the uses currently in place in this area. I will briefly show-- I condensed the list of what was not struck through for the uses, and these are the allowed uses: accessory, agricultural, cemetery here. It would be a private or family cemetery. It wouldn't be a commercial cemetery. Single and two-family housing. Were he to establish a home occupation, he could have a small sign on his parcel studios if that were something that he would pursue. Accessory structures, temporary buildings, manufactured housing, special events as allowed, and temporary storage or temporary care for someone who would need health care. So after reviewing the application, I concluded that this is a perfectly suitable request for this area. The owner of the parcel, Carol Allen, lives in Raleigh. She was emailed a copy of all of the conditions and agreed to those in writing, which is signature-notarized in her file as required by 160D. Mr. Brodnax also agreed to these. So although the conditional residential agricultural district is not common, the owner and the applicant acknowledged and agreed to the conditions noted so as to minimize any potential concerns about future uses that might otherwise be allowed in the RA district as a whole. So we recommend approval for the request. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question. First of all, is there a building on the property now?
There is not.
It's just a--
It's a vacant residential zone.
Okay. Secondly, I noticed some requests regarding manufactured housing. Is that in conflict with the UDO as far as manufacturing housing in this district?
It is not. The former Development Ordinance did have an allowance for a special use permit for a double-wide manufactured home in the residential protected district. Single-wide manufactured homes were not allowed in the residential protected district at all. The current ordinance does not allow any manufactured housing in the residential protected district of any kind. That special use permit is no longer recognized or valid. However, in the RA zone, Class A, single-wide mobile homes, Class AA, modular and site-built homes are suitable, as are tiny homes, as long as they are constructed to residential building code or modular tiny homes. Anything that's built to residential building code essentially is allowed in the residential agricultural district.
Okay, but a trailer-type home is not?
Yes, it is. This is residential agricultural, but it's a conditional use. Among the conditional uses are manufactured housing, Class A and AA.
Okay. Is that what the foundation and screening requirements for tolling apparatus are about?
Yes. That includes all the necessary appearance criteria for any manufactured home on any lot anywhere in the county on an individual basis outside of a manufactured home park.
Some of these conditional uses appear to be businesses. How does that fit in with residential agricultural?
These are not businesses, per se. This is the permitted use table that does not actually include-- we need to add it to it at this point-- cottage industry. This would include only home occupations, which are permitted in all residential districts. These are occupations that take place only within the home, were that a means of employment for the occupant.
So the guest house, the owner would have to be an occupant.
Guest house is only for guests. If it-- And a guest house can only be incidental to a site-built home or modular home. The guest house can be 50% of the square footage of the primary dwelling, the accessory dwelling unit. A guest house cannot be subordinate to a manufactured home.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran?
I have one.
Cindy Hayworth is recognized.
Thank you, sir. Has there been any calls to you from the neighbors?
I had two inquiry calls today, and they were basically just wanting more information on what the case was about. There was no strong feeling one way or the other, and I received no emails. And that's it. And as you can see, we don't have much of a neighborhood presence, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cochran? In that case, thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. Mr. Brodnax is here to answer any questions, if there are any.
Okay, Mr. Brodnax, would you like to come up and speak? Before you begin, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Craig Brodnax. I live at 175 Rhodes, Eden, 27288. What I'm planning to do with this is get like a two-bedroom or three-bedroom mobile home and put it there, and that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Mr. Brodnax?
I have a question for Mr. Brodnax.
The Chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
Mr. Brodnax, is this going to be your primary residence?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brodnax. You may be seated if you wish. This appears to be a pretty simple request. I think the conditional uses that are outlined are within reason. Chair will entertain a motion if there's one out there.
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
I would like to make a motion to approve case 2021-21, the rezoning to residential agricultural condition district amendment and adopts the following statements as required by NC GS 160. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans, the Rockingham County Planning Board recommends approval of case number 2021-21. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This zoning amendment does support the intent and descriptions of the G1 low-density land class. The permitted uses in the residential agricultural condition district-- conditional district are compatible with the character of existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning conforms to the guidelines, goals, and requirements of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan G1 Low Density Land Class and Future Land Use Map. The board considers this action in adopting the proposed zoning amendment to be reasonable because the size of the parcel is appropriate for the residential agricultural conditional district. The proposed uses allowed in the district are appropriate for the land, considering its effect on the landowners, neighborhoods, neighbors, and community. The property for the request abuts to properties that are currently zoned residential agricultural and residential protected. Current uses in the area match those permissible in the proposed zoning distance. District on balance the following factors: the size of the tract in question, the compatibility of the zoning action with the comprehensive plan, the benefits, detriments resulting from the zoning action for the owner of the newly permitted property, the neighbors, and surrounding community, and the relationship between the envisioned permitted use and the uses currently present in adjacent tracks weigh in favor of approving the proposed zoning amendment. There are no additional comments. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve case number 2021-22. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chair, is it 22 or 21?
Did I say 22?
Yes.
My error. It's 2021-21.
Okay, thank you.
I stand corrected. Again, the vote-- All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, Mr. Brodnax, the planning board will make a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve your application.
The Commissioner's hearing for this case will be October 18, and you'll receive a second letter prior to that hearing also. And of course, you can contact me in the meanwhile with any questions.
The next item on the agenda is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, having to do with situating a recreational vehicle on a lot where a building project is to take place. And in your packet, you should have received a copy of the old UDO and, of course, the new proposed UDO.
There were so many extensive revisions to the permit, a markup would have just been useless, so that's why I simply-- Page one was what was adopted with the UDO on August 16. We knew even at the time of adoption that we were already looking at some adjustments to this permit. There have been several meetings to discuss this among environmental health, planning and zoning, community development, building inspections, information technology, county commissioners, county leadership, and others to help iron out what we felt like was a better framework for allowing this use. It's recognized as a need in the county, but we wanted to make sure that it was regulated in the appropriate way and fairly. The most significant changes, of course, you can read through, were a decrease and a clarification of language in the intent, which the intent was a little bit-- the language was a bit squishy. We made it quite clear that it can be applied for 90 days prior to obtaining the building permit for the primary residence. However, simultaneously, you must also submit your building plans for the structure. That was not a requirement initially, and initially it was six months. The time period of-- the duration of approval is the same, 18 months, and may be renewed once for six months for delays caused by very exceptional reasons: severe weather, some severe construction material shortage, something like that. Has to be determined by the community development director or appointee. We clarified wastewater disposal. We chose to impose a legally allowed and significant fine for any appropriate disposal of wastewater, particularly sewage. Again, it is required to access potable water from a well or public water utility. An electrical permit must be obtained. An RV cannot be used as temporary shelter for the place in which a manufactured home--
Okay, if you could just hold it right there.
Okay. Oh, got a question already?
Yes. To my right here, Thomas Cardwell and I had a conversation about this, and I'm going to ask him to bring to your attention a concern that I share with him.
Everybody knows in this recent year, and we're working on the second year, there's been lots of shortages of building supplies, and that transfers right over to manufactured homes, and then the labor shortage also.
It does.
It's been a hardship for some of these people waiting on their homes, whether it be double-wide or a modular. And there's some bigger modulars that are going in. They go in in pieces. And I'm familiar with a few people who have been waiting for homes, which were termed manufactured homes. And I don't see discriminating against these people as being a proper way to do this. I mean, that's how I look at it, so.
That was-- I think you're quite right. The initial thinking was that before COVID and before supply chain shortages and all of these things, the thinking had been that the timeframe needed to acquire, move, and set up a manufactured home is so much shorter than to construct a modular or a site-built home.
Yes, normally that is the case.
But you are correct that right now we are in extraordinary circumstances. So if that is a recommendation or a concern that you guys have and would like to make language changes, we can certainly mark that down and take it to the Board of Commissioners, depending on how the board feels.
Is there a way to put into the language-- if-- a way to acknowledge that there may be at times shortages in building materials that will-- that would stop or delay manufactured housing?
You see, we have language in here that covers things like a delay beyond the owner's--
Which might include a construction material shortage.
Right, but outright ban--
Yeah.
For example, I'm putting up a modular house, and it's going to come in eight different sections, and I get five of them, and the other three are not even started yet. I might have to wait six months to get them.
And people are waiting that long.
So here I am with four fifths of a house, and I can't live in it. You know, so you can see what a concern for allowing a recreational vehicle under those circumstances, even if it involves a manufactured or modular home.
It certainly is.
It seems like a matter of fairness to us to extend that privilege of having--
Have some kind of provision for that.
--a recreational vehicle on the property.
I would suggest that if you're going to do that, that we also make sure to include the provision for repair of an extensively damaged manufactured home.
Absolutely.
Sometimes they are repaired. Very often, they're not. They're demolished. But make sure that we distribute it fairly, as you say, to do that.
So if you could make that concern of ours known to the commissioners, we would appreciate--
Is there specific language you'd like to suggest?
That's my next question. We-- I don't feel like that we-- I mean, we can come up with language, but I feel like that we would need a more professional person that does this on a regular basis to write the language for us, or an attorney, because that's where it's going to get--
John Morris has reviewed this and was comfortable with the language.
How about if we just eliminate item H?
Yeah.
I was going to say that the best thing to do is either going to be eliminate item H or say that this applies equally to-- But if you want to eliminate item H, that makes it perfectly clear and simple.
Okay.
What if you opted to put a provision in that if they-- that item H was-- would be something that the planning board would approve? You know, that if there was that kind of exception, that the planning board-- bring it to the planning board, we'll--
I think that there's a potential for that to be exceptionally burdensome on the planning board. Yeah, that would be my concern.
Not to mention-- and sorry to interrupt, but that goes into discretionary powers, which becomes more quasi-judicial than legislative, so we need to stay away from that bridging of things.
Very good point.
Eliminate H.
Yeah, eliminating H is the simplest matter.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know when-- will we be back to a normal--
Right, we keep thinking--
As far as--
Ooh, we're going to be normal.
Labor and building materials, and we don't know. And it carries-- it's carrying over to everything. I mean, it's not just homes. I mean--
My favorite Greek yogurt, Pops. Can't get them. I'm saying, yes, it's hitting every market segment.
The same as even applying right now to appliances.
I want to--
I mean, they're tough to get.
Yeah, it is.
Brand-new appliances.
Can't get cat food for Mom's cat. I mean, yeah.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's tough. It's tough. He's picky. No, of course, I'm making light a little bit here, but this is a serious matter. But it is-- it's a very good point that we don't know when many of these supply chain shortages, manufacturing delays, and with inflation and what's happening with housing in general, it's all very concerned-- all very valid concerns, I think.
Do we-- what do we need to do? Do we need to make a motion to strike H or just--
I would recommend it.
Okay. Okay.
A motion and a vote, so that it will be a formal recommendation of the Board with a vote for the Commissioners to consider.
Do we need to see if there's anything else before we?
And finish the document.
Not very much else, yeah. Just that only one RV can be occupied under this permit. Within 60 days of receiving this certificate of occupancy, the use of the temporary shelter for residential purposes must cease. There's some language that our brand-new Community Development Director, who is a certified flood plane administrator, added for us, which is very helpful. If any of these requirements are not met at some time or abuse is found, power may be disconnected immediately, and per our existing language in the UDO, appointed designees have the right to inspect premises such as these at any time. If there's something else you might like to add, I'll be glad to.
No, I think we'll, Julie, were you, were you?
Yes.
Ready to make a motion? And the chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt the language for Section 62.74 recreational vehicle during new home construction, that we strike Item Number H, but leave it at that.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to recommend that the county commissioners adopt the proposed UDO standards to Section 62.74 for all items except Item H, which we recommend All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. Not seeing any opposition, the motion is adopted, and we'll entrust our senior planner, Mr. Cochran, to bring this to the attention of the, of the Board of Commissioners by way of the formal vote.
Absolutely. And I definitely would like to, to thank our new Community Development Director for jumping in and helping out on this. He's very instrumental in helping us develop some of this language.
We appreciate your input as well, Marzy. Thank you.
It's my job.
The next item on the agenda is election of officers. We have two offices, a chairman and vice chairman. I currently am serving as chairman, and Julie Talbert is currently serving as vice chairman. I believe the proper protocol calls for a nomination to be made. So we're ready to hear a nomination for chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I recommend we leave it as is.
Motion has been made and seconded to retain by reelection the office' current officers serving as chairman and vice chairman. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. I didn't mean to do that. All those opposed, like, sign. There being no opposition, the current officers, chairman and vice chairman are reelected for a second term. I think I broke this thing.
Oh, you knocked the whole thing off. I'm going to fix it. At this point, I would actually like to volunteer, Mr. Marziano, to maybe say hello to the Board and just give a little background information and let him know what his thoughts about how it's been so far.
Good evening, thanks for, I guess, thanks for this opportunity to say hello. I'm Hyron Marziano, y'all can call me Marzy. I've been, I've been doing planning work probably, I guess, since about 2007, so I've got about 14 years in the field. I've bounced from the Piedmont to the coast, to the swamp, back to the coast, back to the Piedmont. So I've been in some challenging areas. Most of it's been municipal. This is my first county assignment, so I'm really looking forward to that challenge. But so far, so good. It's been hectic, it's been busy, I love it. Everyone I've met is awesome. I'm from, I'm from Randolph County, so I'm in the region, so this is so much like home. And it's so nice to be back around like-minded people. So I really appreciate being here, and I'll just give y'all a couple philosophies I have on, on the way I do my work. Life's not fair, but government should be. So I try to take a approach that no matter what we're doing for one, we're going to do it for everyone, but that goes in the same factor when we're trying to figure out the rules and trying to figure out the regulations, that, you know, we've got to apply unfairly across the board, so we should think about it and not just do knee-jerk reactions to a lot of things that may come up. I mean, it's government, it does take a little bit of time, so I'd like to put a little bit more forethought than just quick action. Some things do require that, but I like to, like to slow it down the pace a little bit so we can make sure we're doing what's right for the community and not just what's right for an individual. At the same time, common sense approach to everything. The rules are there, but they should be applied with some actual common sense and not just, you know, holding, holding the hand to the fire on, you know, black and white rules. So there's a little bit of interpretation leeway, and I always rely on those advice of my staff that I work with, hopefully really closely. It's a team effort, so, and that includes, well, y'all aren't my staff, but that works hand-in-hand working with y'all, so my door is always open to discuss anything that we would like to, to talk about. That's everything in a nutshell.
Well, thank you very much, Marzy. We're, we're glad to have you.
You have no idea.
He said he is.
You have no idea.
Lynn's still been carrying the, the brunt of all the work, as I'm trying to learn the software and get wherewithal, so.
But there's that, there's life in that future.
That light's a month or so off.
It's there, though. It's there.
Gives me hope.
There being no other business before the Board, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, and they're already raising their hands. Obviously, no opposition. The meeting is adjourned.